Five thirty-one. First order of business, minutes if any, or else people caught up with those on.
No, I have like set a date for you to approve it. So if you're comfortable, they're not even there.
Did you print them?
I did not print them.
What's what's stated that from?
Yes, thank you.
Or respondents, if any, or anything in that? No invoices, proven signs, site, you're gonna send that to me?
Correct.
Here, we're just buzzing through this. Next on the agenda is uh it's under new business, but it's basically a continuation of a hearing. Jason?
Okay. July eighth, twenty twenty-four, five fifteen P M, at one library lane, Old Carnegie Library, top floor of Granby, Mass. The nature of the hearing is to consider the petition of Heather Reynolds Lobante, owner applicant, seeking a special permit under section six point two of the Granby building bylaws and applicable of section three use regulations, three point two point ten, and section five special use regulations, performance standards, five point one four, special event venue at one forty-five Hardest Street, and known as assessor's map twelve dash A dash one in the town of Granby, Mass.
So the hearing's been opened. We do not have a quorum for. We're going to give it some time, see if another member shows up. We're supposed to be. Should be four of us here tonight, so we're gonna sit tight. Wait for our fourth member. In the meantime, if there's anybody that wants to speak tonight, if they would please sign in at our sheets here at the. Table. And our fourth member is here. Just open, we just opened the hearing.
Sure. So um for the purposes of the special permit, um there isn't a point for permanent votes. There need to be, there needs to be four yes votes for for an approval of of the special permit. Um you do have four present members, so all four would have to vote yes, and that's what's in order to, in order to, that's correct.
Okay, so this hearing's gonna work as. So this this hearing's gonna work as, the applicant's gonna present it. Then we'll open it up to public comment. And then some. And the staff from the other department. And then we'll go from there, but we will decide from that. So the applicant, please present your your application.
Hi, um I'm Kate Robb, we have a little fraunty, we're honoring folks who are going for it, there should be a thought here. Especially my role play, I mean things that have, that is right out of there, that I think to a big job, actually. Uh I was, she says, you know, to one very step up in eight different clubs, um it's more of a loss where I grew up. It's beautiful, private, very quiet, um and everything to have, based on not, and they're not around. They can only be from people in October and not necessarily, not beautiful, it was, moving more file than this. So the way is and live, um that's my book and uh the team has heard from me, well, so. Um they're not going to give any questions to the, to the, to the, 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 the. So they uh they go proceed, what they seem to want to.
Thank you.
Well, one other thing I will add, I need to reconsider about, okay, now to work with the tenants. So we're putting that aside, we broke it back down to the events, um and so these come in, you're taken out without, so they're not here, it's for the.
Thank you. So are we ready to tell them this on to the public? So I ask the public.
I was gonna say, I think typically um you have the uh staff comments from before that.
Yeah, I'm trying to get through that right now. This is the first I've seen. In the meantime, we'll. Let the public speak. I ask that you address the board, not the not the applicant. Is there anybody that has anything that they wish to? Name?
Good summer, I think, that's the street. Name?
Address?
Four twenty-eight Gattis.
Did you write it down on the?
Yes, I did. Ready? Okay, yeah, I'm not gonna say it, I'm not in favor of or opposed to this, like we did, so, but I do have a few comments that I can just go over it. First of all, if and when you approve this permit, I would ask that you make sure you put forth a request when you then it, then you. Try this, you put a word, hopefully dance, allow the hanging of the individual areas, and grant you. And what the district calls, or neighbors, so try this, all this, he did, all this, you did. To the not completely land, there's no, they're Friday, you did this, so that from the wrong.
Come after people's pets, come after people's, you know, livestock and things like that. And it's, you know, a genuine concern, you know, because they're
Valid point, valid point.
You know, and I don't know if that's necessarily the look of it, doesn't sound like it, but you know, it is something that I would like to see considered.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, yes?
You may.
So just to, uh, two speeches, that was what I heard. As far as portables, by the way, since you used to read that letter, um, we are moving into our chain, I don't need to have trailers run in that have water, so that should not be an issue. Um, those trailers will take it out after this, so there should be no waste. So there's no need for any such, because any of the women who were buying or a trailer of my service, that whatever is in will come out. Um, we're not looking to change anything, it's like, I'm not looking to have egg products, I'm not looking for more than a hundred, having up to a hundred and fifty D worth, whatever you possibly live, I've worked to get this by law change over the last few years, and it's taken me a very long time to get where I'm standing right now. The reason I'm doing this is so that I can keep the property that I grew on, and I want to share the property with you guys. So that's my rationale, and I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to, uh, destroy anyone by any stretch. Uh, I just know the third street, I know that there are a lot of people wall there, this is not going to be something where people are going to, it's a wedding income, and then they leave at the end of the event, so that's not something that I, um, that I put to be humble, any concern, even the police were comfortable with the area. I also don't want to mention it's ten to ten, not ten to eleven, and in number four screen on my application, I do have, I do mention briefly, and that will lead to the, um, by law test balls. Um, also, about any one will have business, what I proposed when I had by law adjusted, uh, or changed added, was for its P ten less acres, so that's how this started, and I have fifty-two acres, um, there. Rossburg, Bexham, Park, and Community, so the two sugar there, so we, uh, are classified as a farm. We also, I don't anticipate any waste whatsoever, that means that comes in here, and any of the trash will be removed, um, and we're looking to have dumpsters in a discreet location, um, so I just wanted to clarify those concerns.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, do all the dumpster people want, once a week?
You're, you're pressing the board?
Sorry, we don't do that. And what board of plans? I like, as soon as they will be following the events, the board of events would be, the air crews whose schedule could be addressed, and any dumpster company that I put down will be big. So once a week, I'll bring for dumpster, do I have any evidence? I'm wanting to go further, I haven't yet addressed this process.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask you that you address the board, not each of them.
I'm sorry, I haven't yet addressed this process, so what I can tell you, as far as from my level, um, so if I anticipate, if I need to get it done more often, that I can recall all the, and, or.
Thank you.
Really awesome, um, I had the whole, um, things to say, because, uh, I think the letter from Board of Health required the response, the response, and they haven't received. So it's, it might be his right to, to do a questionnaire and all of that, and people could respond when they're asked for something, um, and do the writing, and please date it, I noticed that somebody very important came back from the bio chief, board, board, laying board, police, fire, building, byway, conservation, at least one of them, and to, so it wasn't clear mandate written, so just, you know, just maybe this. Yeah. Um, so does this special events thing you permit, is this like a permit or a permit or something, you load that, renew it once a year, do we know anything about that, is this not in the law?
So, once the, once, and if the permit is issued, it's issued with conditions, and then, and then if the conditions aren't being met, then it, then it goes to our co-enforcement officer, and they, and they take steps to, to regulate it. Look, let me remind everybody here, this is, this is not the board's decision, this was a town-wide vote, it was, it was brought to our attention, we were asked to review it, we reviewed it, there's multiple towns in the Commonwealth that allow these types of venues, so we felt, we felt that we needed to bring it to the town as an article, the select board approved that it went to the town as an article, and that the entire, well, the town voted to approve this, this bylaw, so we're here to, to regulate it, to, to, to go through the process, listen to everybody's concerns, and the board will vote whether to approve it or, or not, and if it's approved, it will be approved with certain conditions, we don't take this lightly, so all this information we're getting tonight, um, I can't speak for the board right now, I don't know if we're gonna make a decision tonight, or we're gonna, we're gonna, um, wait for additional information to come in before, before a decision is made, and all the valid, valid concerns and questions that everybody has here tonight, we will, we certainly, um, take it under consideration, and we'll go from there.
Um, a couple of things, like I had a question, uh, as Jerry did, about the trash problem, because I have, there are screws in my house all the time, and I'm too worried, like, I actually, this is a, same others, um, and I am concerned about a once-a-week dumpster throughout, because I think that would really, really, um, just attracting, who knows, all our, all our.
Here, wait, I, I've got it noted here, that's, that's something we'll, we'll have conversation for.
It's something to confirm with, when, when there's gonna be a beach event, um, the applicant will have to submit another application or petition to the police team and the fire chief, so that they know what they're getting into, like, I talked to, um, she in the ready this morning, and he said, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look, and we'll see how many people be attending, based on peace numbers, we will decide, you know, whether we, we're gonna be in there with travel, or whatever, so that's, that's, um, I noticed that, uh, insurance, I noticed that insurance sheet, there, in Heather's file, at least they quote, I think, about the policy, and it's dated in two thousand and twenty-one, which means that that does something that we heard, that there's issues, so we didn't do this right, um, there should be insurance sheet, there's, this is also a question, that really has been questioned here, that people really have to fill out, and I think, you know, if the, if the application were a little bit weird, because there's nothing on it that refers to the survey approved or not, and we all know that caterers will come, and they got their licenses, about why it would be a four months, Mr. Rob, one day license, so I think that needs to be learned, but at least, we're interested in knowing that, too, because they obviously, that's one.
This, this board doesn't issue those, we're, so this board is responsible for site plan approval?
I understand. Um, no, especially in these, there's, there's, um, and, I mean, I'd have to say, um, maybe the weapons, uh, sort of, I remember you about in my piece, and I'm not looking forward to having a lot of music, it's implemented, and not, I mean, we're available, and I, we all hear each other, we're all talking out front of that, each other's thoughts, somebody just asked, I thought your dog was big, he sounded like he's fine, you know, so we, we can hear each other up there, and then we'll find music, that, that does become an issue, and I would like to enjoy, my, my, I've finished working forty-two years, I'd really like to be able to enjoy my weekdays and the weekends, um, in a certain peaceful, quiet place, where I can listen to, maybe, maybe a DJ, or the inevitable wedding guest who starts to sing, or something, so, I am concerned about them in ways that I don't know how, um, you know, we all hear each other, the police chief told me today, and he said, their decibel leader is basically two years of whatever officer else to listen, they don't actually have to listen a year, but I know they're, we're listening, we're gonna be a bad listeners, so, I just hope that's all expected, so that we can all, we'll be happy ever after, and this, yes, that's just a bunch of leaders, so that's, people all over town, I mean, this will come up, or go again, and I, I begin to accept the right of people to monetize, I mean, they're the arms, and I'm on you, so, I just ask for all the suggestions.
Thank you. Sir, is there anybody else? Rich, Rich, this gentleman hasn't spoken yet, so.
From Bob and the one sixth Parrot Street, I always want to make, are you really changed the zone on that problem?
Hey, Rich.
It's, I, I said a question, did the applicant get something in writing from the Board of Health, or from the, confirming that they accept what she said?
What who's, what who said?
What the applicant said about having porta potties, because if you look in the user evaluations, again, like, one, one floor, and the board was responsible for, it doesn't mention porta potties, we mentioned, so, if she gets something in writing from the Board of Health, because if she already has something in writing saying that the Board of Health is not to accept what she gave away, and she's saying, now, they go have porta potty and hand washing, and I just want confirmation that the Board of Health accepts that she gave away as a response, they have complained.
Does anybody else have it?
Um, yeah, I have, should, the letter from the Board of Health, um, when the colleague at the Dale's, regarding special event venue at one forty-five first street, important fault at the meeting six four twenty-four, stated that they do not believe that sending or system sewage and hand washing was prescribed and not detailed to issue a permit, and they are reading, um.
Yeah, so that, so that's a different permit, permission, yeah.
This, no, this is.
This is, this is their comments to the planning board.
Exactly.
So if we approve, if this board approves the venue, then there, the Board of Health has a different obligation for them to meet, not the planning board, we reach out to listen to their concerns, and if there's something outside of the regular, then we'll, we'll put it into the conditions, but as far as them having a, a, a particular set of sanitation, whether it's, please correct me if anybody has anything else to say on this, whether they have a trailer that's self-contained, or they have porta potties, or they put in their own system, it's between them and, and the Board of Health.
Right, that, this, you know.
Well, most certainly can, most certainly can, the, the planning board reaches out to the, to the, to the other departments to get your feedback, we're not governed by any of the other departments, we listen to them, we, if they have a strong argument, we can make it a condition, you know, the fact of the matter is, we, if, if the town, or if the planning board issues the permit, they still have to comply with what the Board of Health has to say, or, or, um, conservation, we, we.
These are separate issues, and you're saying, you just want to then, then say the tent is not a hundred feet tall, then the Conservation Commission would say, we don't have the tent. It's yours to. Um, the only thing that's not on questionnaire, which, um, should be, when you, the, apparently will issue that, very frequently, have used fire hits, um, on, 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 I was saying, on fire, just all the stuff they do, like, I could be, they can say, hey, imagine another fire.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Having something that would go around fire, which, well, the fire dealers, or, or performing.
Correct, absolutely, exactly, which is outside our authority.
Exactly, that's what I was talking about, application itself is somewhat.
Thank you.
Um, I would know, um, why, um, the state was sent certified letters to, um, to, um, conservation, and that kind of issue, the Department of Department of Public, what to do, all of that, obviously, a lot of the notices you've noticed, it was.
I'm not aware of that.
Do you worry?
Yeah, they're on the.
You mean the public, the public notice, or the public notice requirements, those, there are specific entities that are supposed to receive any notice of a special permit hearing, a public hearing, that includes the, um, the abutting towns, as well as the.
That's just the formality.
It's just the formality of why they send it to those particular places.
Well, I follow, you may not know what I was talking about, because they haven't been on the classway sheet for all their years, so they never got the letters, and they said, really, we should be going to the Western District, not to the West End, so then, I spoke to somebody with a living town, a many board that was new, and they said it's a purpose, and they didn't notice, but the person at the main board person that had thin cameras, the Wisconsin cameras, chicken be, blood log, and I don't know, it was to South Adam and voucher deal, and they said, each, the state requires that it goes as a purpose to all the abutting, uh, towns, and it did, only once or two, so. We would, and the state pretty good things, they never stepped back, and they were laughing, they said to me, well, we've sent everyone out, the four didn't think, oh, for a trend match, now, and she said that four, you know, that's all, that's from, well, I was, so we never, we don't have a, she knew, I was smacking, everything, and so we were.
The one will respond?
So I just wanted to say, the reason of the insurance, it is tentative, is because I have a lot of control, and I'm not going to, yes, um, business insurance, and so I root, that just seems like logical business practice, um, and I want to just, I forgot it was, no, it's okay, and I don't have the only arm in town who has requested to, to rent some of my property, um, um, property, it's been happening with, uh, issue, um, for not a long time, but, I'm guessing it's been a year, uh, so, this isn't the most, um, quality and was, uh, instrumental by law, I'm not, like, there's one who's going to be managed, uh, um, machine.
Thank you.
Yes, some special, uh, things have been brought, and I, I would, and you said.
Well, one other, and then this is our second, correct?
I understand.
Right, yes.
It's a good people. Parties.
I can see. Anyone else with any comment, any concerns? Does the board have any questions? People close, and I entertain a poetry to. So I'll entertain a motion to close the public input, so I'll make a motion to close the public side of the discussion.
Second.
For the discussion, all those in favor? Okay. So, we, we've got a lot of things here to discuss, um, we've got some things, some research we need to do, and some questions for the applicant, um, I'm not quite sure how everybody wants to go about it, but, um.
So I kinda, I wrote, you have some notes, too, I wrote some, some conditions, so restroom rental to be removed after the event, if they're to back events, they want music to obey the town noise ordinance, police detail when needed, dumpsters to be emptied after every event, um, caterers to have insurance, caterers, um, to start the alcohol.
Yeah, that, that, that's all governed.
Yeah, right, right, so, uh, venue to hold proper insurance, um, times from eleven AM to ten PM, and then temporary shelters to be.
So, as far as the entertainment, we should take, buy lots of that.
The noise ordinance.
Noise ordinance, the decibels, and all that.
Right.
Those are all things we should get some feedback on.
So what I, so I think what would be helpful for the board is the set of conditions that the board issued for the Amherst Street special events.
We want to be, we want to be consistent.
That, yes, exactly.
But, but at the same time, there's conditions that may be true appropriate at different locations and others.
Um, but i- it's likely that some of the language particularly related to the comments from the Fire Department and the Police Department, um, matched those, um, with regard, and the Building Department.
Right.
Um, but I think, well, as you mentioned, there are some items that are very specific to this particular application, that, you know, can be considered, um, what else, and, and the select board also provide comments regarding the other types of permits that are required, um, those entertainment licenses you were speaking to, um, that the applicant would need to, you know, go over with the select board for that, as well, so, um, you know, that, that, however the board wants to move forward, uh, try to assemble those particular pieces for the board.
Wouldn't you mind, just repeating your last two sentences, I don't think you're.
Um, I mentioned to the board that, um, that I would, uh, circulate the decision that was issued from the Amherst Street Special Events Permit, um, because it's likely that a lot of the comments that the Police Department and the Fire Department shared there are going to be similar to this particular permit, in addition to, um, accepting that the, the board has identified some other additional conditions that would likely be included with those set of conditions, if the board approves the permit, um, but it really is going to be circulating that information prior to them issuing a decision.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to recommend if, for the whole motion, that we continue this hearing, till we get some more information.
Yes, so the board, you can receive, just for clarification, on the purposes of the public hearing, um, you can receive comment from the town departments and from the applicant, um, so the actual action is, you're not necessarily continuing the hearing, you are just stating that you will take, you know, you'll use the next meeting as a time to discuss the.
So that being said, the applicant, um, there's some questions we have for you, how many, how many events a, a year, there's some things that we haven't had a chance to look at, from, from some of the other department heads that we want to be able to review and digest, we have anything else that comes up from, from doing that, so I would recommend that we continue.
So then you should rescind the closing of our hearing, because you're, if you're continuing the public hearing.
No, we're not continuing the public portion of it, we're continuing the hard portion.
You're continuing the discussion.
Yeah, we've already. So I will make a motion to continue, um, discussion to the next planning board, which is what date certain?
That would be the, so it would be the fourth Monday, which is, yeah, the Monday of July, um, if the board so does choose, um, that is your typically scheduled one, your routinely scheduled one, the second and fourth, that's July twenty-second.
Right, right.
So, yeah, you need, you need for both, so.
Right.
Um, but it'll also give the other, the other member a chance to be present, if they review the, any information that was provided tonight.
I will be here the twenty-first, should you want to.
Twenty-second.
Oh, twenty-second, so.
Not be here?
I will not be here.
Okay. Well, it doesn't have to be on a regular meeting day, when.
Yeah.
When is everybody available? I prefer to do this with the next week.
Fair.
Should give us sufficient amount of time to get the other information we need from the other department heads, or from the applicant.
About next Monday night.
Fifteenth, no, we're closed, we're closed. Fifteenth, is it? Yeah, it's.
Fifteenth and September.
Can do either, whatever.
The fifteen, fourteen also too?
Fifteen, work.
I, I can be present on the fifteenth, and.
A little more?
Yes.
So the motion is to, convene?
Reconvene on, uh, July fifteenth.
The applicant be available?
If I can zoom in, and what, my, my. Are we, or one week?
Okay, I, I prefer that word here. So it'd be a hardship if we move it to the following week.
We got a reason.
This is a tough time, usually the planning shuts down this time of the year.
Twenty-ninth, I'm available, I'm just not available, I'm, I'm available Friday the twenty-sixth. Or the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth.
You're available?
Well, I'm not available.
Once, we're going twice.
I'm not available on the Friday evening.
Okay, so twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth.
Available on twenty.
Okay.
Twenty-ninth?
Twenty, are you available on the twenty-ninth?
Nate?
Me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay, so, date certain, July twenty-ninth, uh, five, yeah, five thirty? Five thirty, regular time, okay, okay, so continued, um, our, the public meeting is closed, this will be a meeting to discuss.
We have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I agree.
She carries.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda. Thank, thank you, everybody, thank you.
I don't know them.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, this, this, uh, this next hearing is... You're calling it a joint public hearing? I don't think... Kind of in a little pickle here. The minutes called for Granby zoning board of appeals and Granby planning board to hold a public hearing. Somehow or other, the Granby zoning board of appeals didn't feel they needed to be here. That's not the way this was posted. So...
So, if you are a portion at least?
So... We can open up our portion of the hearing. And we can discuss whether or not we feel a zoning board of appeals important, so...
What, what was, what was the reason you mean zoning? Do you know what the reason, what you mean zoning for?
There is a correspondence from the building department, the zoning enforcement officer, um, regarding whether his belief or his belief that if only you're the special surveying site plan approved by the planning board, not then...
Right.
Initially.
Which is different from the advertisement.
Which is different.
So I, so I take exception to that.
Right.
And the zone, the zoning officer and the building inspector does not dictate zoning or the planning board on how we typically run our, our meetings. But nonetheless, we can open up ours. And, and that's what we would typically do if, if they were here. We would open up our meeting, they would open up theirs.
Right.
So, that being said, please...
So, the Granby planning board will hold, hold a public hearing on July 8th, 2024, 5:45 p.m. At One Library Lane, Old Carnegie Library, top floor, Granby, Mass. The nature of the hearing is to consider the petition of May and Michelle Wachowitz, owner applicant seeking a special per- permit and site plan approval for a single family use to include a mother-in-law suite to be occupied by senior immediate family member under section 6.2 and 6.3, special permits and site plan approval of the Granby zoning bylaws and applicable of section 3, use regulations 3.3.2, multi-family dwelling in section 5.0, multi-family dwellings at Zero Phillips Circle and known as Assessor's Map 4-B-2-11 in the town of Granby, Mass.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask the applicants here to, to present.
Hello, my name is Mal, I'm from... Last October about 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, we were approved at that time. Forward, uh, without conditions and it was consistent with what they did. Produced on 80 Grand, uh, one option service, one foundation, you could use a few separate tanks with one soil filtration system, uh, we had, or a revol, everything. The house is built, the, uh, the sheet rival right now and, uh, the, uh, some bylaws when the, uh, the, uh, the eye of Granby, one and two family dwellings now should fall under the department's. Still requires, uh, to be, so the language, so, here we are. Uh, to give you guys an early, uh, who I am, my family, military, Granby, corporate, kids. We wanna live here, where there's our lives. So, this whole sequence of abilities, uh, which, well, both. I did leave a response for some of the building permits and, uh, but, um, so, yes, certainly issues about, or wasting relations, with our streaming, with the... etc., well, you know, even the, like, tech, we're working on the line. Three, streaming, that is naturally occurring, um, like people like, maybe, tuition that this is... satisfied with, you know, the, uh, just due to the location of transfer or, uh, the, the relations to that. Basically, so, this is sad.
So, so, so code enforcement officer said that you weren't compliance with zoning. But yet, zoning's not here. So, that, um...
And he was issued a permit?
A permit.
An approved permit?
But if I'm a case, then we're being pulled out here, possibly a family, so, uh, the zone, uh, was kind of, one, two, one, yes. Uh, so, we don't really fall into, you know, the, the, or single family, but, uh, the, the, you know, I was asked what code language, what is used in this small family area? And I was told that there, it wasn't letter determination for building code, it was letter determination for language.
So, technically, it really isn't, I'm speaking in terms, it's really a single with an accessory. It's not, uh, I mean, I was speaking completely, I might right.
That, that's correct. And, um, the town does not have a bylaw with regards to...
Right, so that's why they're calling it multi-correct.
And to make, to make a notice, these are some of the things that we've been discussing. Discuss.
Right.
Since, since, anyway, thank, thank you.
So, so drawings that you submitted for a building permit were approved and you built exactly what was on your, your drawing?
Yes, uh, well, and we had already, I'm, uh, foundation inspection, uh, warrant, warrant. There was no issue of, uh, in the, in the inspection, that's, that need request.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm gonna, I prefer to open it up to the public before you make any...
Yep.
So, now I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody have any comments? Any butters?
You know, or, or, or some...
Have you signed in?
Oh, no, sorry, please, send me.
Just for reference, for minutes, please.
Yes, well, our only concern would be down the road in the future when it would be a part of, down the road, not one on your... So, that'd be our only concern, having more car was that we're seeing now. Other than that, though, we're fine with their building. I don't know what it's gonna be of all events or ways. We'd be fine with that, just on the future.
Where, where are you located?
Uh, country of your life, 7, 8, 9, 10, the Golds.
So, you, you...
They're behind us.
You're, you're behind us.
So, that's, you know, like a start in the future, you know?
Just making effort, you know, you gotta, you know, some of them, they just wanna run it out, it's a part of the down road, you know? That's what I like to do.
Understood. Anybody else have anything, any comments? Thank you.
Mark Jewett, 17, Phillips Circle. Again, I don't have the objection with, with the permit and such, but, uh, I'm just curious. So, your permit was originally approved in October last year?
At our permit? The building department issued a building permit?
Typically, a building permit is for, good for how long?
Couple of years, they, they...
I think it's two.
Yeah, it's two years. And, and it can be extended for circumstances, like a developer comes in with a subdivision. Economy drives what they do, so they can be extended. And a subdivision as well as a, a single permit for...
I've heard Zero Phillips Circle, will that be issued, numbers from that property?
No.
No?
Again, we don't, we don't issue that, that's the...
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
Right. There's deliveries being made?
Pardon?
If there's deliveries being made right now, it should go to Zero Phillips Circle?
So, I, I can't, I can't, I can't, uh, speak to that. The building inspector issues the, the number, the address. We don't, we don't do that. Again, we're, we're, we're site planner.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't get into all that.
And that number...
But it's a good question. What's your concern on that, like, Zero?
Well, it's just, like I said, I'm the closest property to where the house is being...
On, oh, so you're on the same street?
Yeah, I'm right next door.
Okay, okay.
And it's just as far as, you know, I don't know what the future plans are, deliveries and, and things like that. You know, obviously, they shouldn't be coming to me, they should be going to the, the, you know, the building department.
So that, so that's something we can mention for the building.
The other thing is, so as far as like, single family, multi-family, as far as gas lines and electric and all that stuff, is there changes to, to that? Because, I mean...
Is there gas lines on that street?
Well, if you looked at my, my house today and fun of it, we've got, you know, just the other day, I forget what thing, gas lines, red, red flags are coming up. And there were people out there last few weeks, for example, as far as what they did. And then I was, I was told that there's gonna be second gas lines going in now because of the fact that it's, it's considered multi-family. I mean, this stuff isn't really at the top of my head. I guess, the point is, you know, when is this thing all kind of said and done? Gas line, electric lines?
But I, we can't, I can't speak to that either. We, we're, we're not involved in town utilities. We're having a hard enough time managing some of our old bylaws that don't, don't, they stand us. And we, over the years have been correctly moving, moving... Let me, let me clarify that. We don't, we see issues with them, we bring them to the town for, well, town folks, and they're not, they want to see the, the bylaws. But, it, it's a, it's a living document, needs to be updated. We've talked about this on several meetings, there's a lot of issues outside of what we're talking about tonight, so...
See, so, I was hoping that you would have more answers on it. The next thing on my mouth is gonna be snowplow. And where, where that house is situated, driveway, it's been farmed ever since I've been there, a large mine property is. That's one thing, and the other...
Well, so, so what do you mean by a farce?
Well, as far as the, the town EPW and, and what they plow and what they don't plow and when they come and when they don't come, but, uh, that's again, outside of you...
Way, way outside, right?
Okay, I gotta go see this department, then I gotta go see this department.
You do. But, but if it's a concern where you... They were dumping snow on, on his, uh, his front end, and now they can't do it, then that's, that's a concern that we could, we can mention to the, the, uh, something with those lines. But as far as the timing and the, the... We can't speak to that.
You can always call National Threat and Resource, they, they, you know, them regarding like the gas line and the electric line, and they'll, they'd be happy to answer any of those questions, I'm sure.
We're, we're, when it comes to that, we're no different than any other community.
Yeah.
We don't, we have no control over the utilities, if it's public utilities. If you're not happy with services you're getting, then I would suggest, on, on the record, talk to the select board.
With the utilities?
Utility, you have to talk to the utility, but, but you're talking about snow removal or that's...
No, I'm, I'm just saying, the way it's laid out now, okay? It's like there's a half cul-de-sac in my house, house is beyond, beyond the, the half cul-de-sac. And in the new property that's being built, their driveway is here, my house is here. It's like, it's gonna be very interesting to see what the master plan is to get the snow out. In, in last winter, one time, it was plowed on the top side of, of my property. And there's been kind of an indenting as far as slope of, of that property. And then also putting in these second gas lines, you know, they threw in seed back fall, last fall, which grew in. Now they're gonna, you know, supposedly dig that up again and, you know, I mean...
I get it. I could, I can tell you that the, the director of the EPW is very sensitive to issues and he's quick to address them. Have, have you talked to him? I, I rec, I, I really recommend if he's...
Maybe you should go, if you wanna talk. No, I'm serious. Serious, because I, I've not, not on the road with him before.
So you have talked to him?
Huh?
You have talked?
In the past, yeah. Well, just plowing outward, hasn't gone too great. I'm just saying.
Sorry, sorry.
I mean, again, I don't have any problem with it, it's just the portable stuff, where I've located, how long is this gonna go on for, you know? And, you gotta understand, you know, in this neighborhood, 30 years, nothing like that. You know, obviously, it's their dream home, I don't have a problem with that, but, from A to B, you know, it's a long time.
Okay, understood. Is there anybody out?
So, uh, country dudes, same layer over there, so, he, you know, doing a great job, so... But, yeah.
Is, is there anything, any other comments that directly to this issue?
Yeah.
Yes, we met. Mayman, Mayman Addles? And if you haven't signed in, please... It's just so we can come back here.
Yeah, no, it's fine. So, I'm on 15 Phillips Circle. I have, and I've been there 30 years, and I have exactly the same type of house that he's building. And I was the first, when we bought the house, was the only house in Granby that was a single family with an in-law's addition. And that's what they call it. And they can't rent it because there's not two, there's not an entrance and an exit. I'm just giving you a little bit of information. That's my daughter right there, she's been living with me, turned 91 yesterday. And, uh, so they're just, they're building the same kind of house that I have. It has this, you know, one meter this, one meter that, whatever. And, um, it's, it, they, no one has ever bothered us, no one's ever tried to change anything. It is not a two-family, it's not a multi-dwelling. It's a single-family home with an in-law's addition, that's it. That's how it is with my town, with the town, that's what it is, my house insurance company, that's exactly what it is. And I've been there for my 30 years that I've lived there.
Yes, thank you very much. So, I'm gonna speak from, from myself, not for the board. This is not the first, um, in-law apartment that's going. There's, there seems to be, so this connects between the Grammy department heads on what's allowed, what isn't allowed, and it's one of the things we need to change. My personal opinion is we should be allowing this to happen with some, with some control. We should be taking care of our parents. It's, 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 it's changing times. But, again, this is, it's, it's on our list to be working on, some of the bylaws that we need to present to the town and let the town vote on whether or not they're gonna allow them, disallow them, or put certain conditions on. At this point, I, I think the town's out of liability, they issued these people a permit.
Yeah.
And, and it's been allowed elsewhere in town. And there's been no opposition from the embalmers, who, who have showed tonight other, some other concerns that they're, they have that pretty much aren't related to, to this. And I'm sympathetic to those concerns. And these folks have a house that's half-built, and it's, and it, it was... I don't know, I don't, I don't know what took place, I wasn't part of that, that piece until a couple of weeks ago. I went out there to see, when, when things like this come up, I like to focus my eyes on it a little bit to see what's going on. And I think they're building a, a, a home that is going to be complimentary to the neighborhood. It's not, it's not a shack, it's not got dried values down. So, I'm, I'm opening it up to the rest of the board, any comments, any?
More? Yes, I guess my comment is, you know, it should be approved as a single of an accessory, not a multi. That's my comment.
Okay.
I mean, although there's other houses out on the street, I mean, my house is personally a single with an accessory, like Marines.
All right, so let, let me formalize this, is there any more comment from the public? So let's, I'll entertain a motion, so we'll do with the public input.
I'm, I'll make a motion to close the public input.
And a second?
Yep, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any further discussion that you, you wanna have on this? I'll entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove.
I'll make a motion to approve, as a, my, single family accessory, yes.
And we'll second that motion?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the purposes of. This is for the special permit, is this for the site plan review? It's just, the decision rendered is. The, looking at the zoning bylaw. The conversation based on the building inspectors or the zoning enforcement officers. Um. Um, what, what do I wanna say here? His determination. Um, was that it should have been filed as a multi-family, I know that you didn't feel comfortable with that, but with regards to. If, if we're trying to just like bury the hatchet and make sure that this gets permitted, um, under multi-family dwelling. Um, it's a special permit, it's a plan approval. So if the board also wants to issue the special permit, we can ensure that, um, you know, that the decision rendered is specific to that.
But.
So.
But I do have concerns, like I do have concerns of calling it, yeah.
Sure.
Because it's really.
First of all, code enforcement doesn't dictate to us. How we.
That's true. That, that is true.
They're responsible for enforcing what we improve.
Right.
So I'm gonna ask for another motion to, to be inclusive of the site plan.
And special permit.
Special permit. That you're looking for, that's right.
So I'll make a moment to approve, for a single family with accessory, special permit, and site.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The applicant can, the applicant can.
Um, so now that we're kind of, usual department, we're not considering single family. But definitely are beginning to move on. Uh, and we, we're, we. If, if we're doing this like for the IRC and, and building code, there are, um, there are. Probably any factors, um, wanted to, etc., part of, to, to families of older. So for example, um, I am being required to have one fire wall, which. Post back in the moment, how it feels, and it already framed, and also, which we can't, is a little bit difficult to do if you want to, which is strictly as a, a way to. But in existence, well, in a basic statement, requirement, so obviously, smoke alarms and our, instead of, and then, then, which kind of, they've seen a lot of generation. Feeling that they're really going forward in the project.
So the motion, the motion was to approve a single family with an accessory. So that would exempt you. From what you're telling us, everybody, from what you're telling us, we're not experts on the building. You're telling us that that would exempt you from the firewall.
I would just asking.
You're asking us?
We were going to use that same, and we can, so now they find a, a building inspector and say, this is what older people do now. Would we consider that we can be exempt from this, we're not too great.
That's between you, again, you don't, you don't have any jurisdiction.
No, the, the, the question primarily is, we're using accessory dwelling as terminology, that. Basically, the IRC, or. Minutes, as we say, I don't.
We're in a condition. Okay, so you made the motion.
I second it.
You second it. There was no further discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
It's about a tough hike.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else here we did, we adjourned? They do, if you wanna talk to the board about, I think, grants.
Oh, we gotta make an motion to close.
Yeah.
Ten months to talk to us about a grant.
Hey, hey, folks, 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 folks. Still got business to conduct, so if you don't mind, thank you. Yes, you want a motion, all those adjourned?
I mean, this kind of, just, uh.
Yeah, just briefly, so, um, I want to, I don't know if the board, so the board has typically contracted with PDPC. For a, a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars per year. Um, I am putting together a grant application for planning assistance grants with the understanding that, that.
Folks, folks. They're still trying to conduct grant law, thank.
Yeah.
Thank you, good luck.
Um, so the planning assistance grant requires a twenty-five percent match of power fund, um, for that. So my thought was to utilize the typical arrangement that I've had with the town of Granby, or PDPC has had with the town of Granby to beat that match. With that said. Um, I am suggesting that this is going to be more than thirty, thirty thousand dollar grant to get through the entirety of the zoning bylaw. Um, what has been, what we've been doing with other communities are applying for grants upwards of fifty, and I think. Having it be at fifty, which is the maximum that the state will allow for this particular grant program, requires that a twelve thousand five hundred dollar, um. You know, match. So, um, my thought was to approach the town administrator with regards to, I don't know what has been approved at town meeting. Uh, obviously, I, I, the discussion about the contract has always kind of been like, oh, here's the contract, we find it.
Right.
Uh, well, and we're at end of fiscal year, so I'm currently, you know, attending this, uh, based on the fact that presumably we'll have the contract. Um, with that said, I don't know if the board has a thought with regards to. Asking the town administration, there, there is some, like, there's gonna be some signatures that I'll need, mostly from the town administrator and. Others to get the application in, and the application is due July twenty-second.
But you'll take care of the application?
Yeah.
You just need signature.
I, well, I knew that, but I would love the support and maybe discussion, and maybe through the chair, um, to ask for that particular match. Um, that would be my contract with, the contract that I have with the planning board.
But that would be inclusive with twelve-five, or is twelve-five would be separate from your current?
The twelve-five would be my contract, and that contract would be the match for the fifty thousand dollars, um, from the state. So there would be an additional fifty thousand. I obviously wouldn't be using the twelve thousand five hundred for any of that zoning bylaw work. The, presumably, the grant would cover all of that work.
Can you get that in an email?
Sure.
Copy us all, send it to Chris.
Sure, well. That was it, so July twenty-second, okay, I mean, we've been discussing, we've been discussing this for a while.
I wanna second. Art bylaws.
Yeah.
Need, need some, need some help.
The gentleman that was talking about five point one four, that was specific to open, open space communities, that wasn't even in the special event. Um, venue section of the bylaw, so there is some, a lot of confusion with the number in.
Great, and. I mean, on, on record, obviously, but like, that, that house should never be constituted as a multi. Because then they could rent it out, they could rent it. Other than multi-generational living.
Yeah, and it's not quite clear, the bylaw doesn't, it really doesn't meet the intent of the multi.
No, it doesn't.
No, so I think as the board and having talked with the chair, um, is defining what an accessory dwelling unit is, getting that passed.
Right.
Or getting some language in there, but with that said, um, if you're following the state news with regarding the housing bond bill.
I know.
There is a de facto approval of all accessory dwellings under, under.
Right.
So it wouldn't need to go to any board, it would just be.
You're gonna see more of that come down from the state, it's gonna start dictating to the town.
With regards to housing.
Well, a lot of towns were, were not allowing, cities and towns were not allowing accessory units, however, I mean.
There's a reason.
There's a reason for them.
There's a housing issue, and the states dictate some of it, they're, that the towns have to suffer.
Right, and they should be taxed appropriately.
Well, it's based on the value.
Right.
There's no additional tax if you're a business or. Thank you. Is there anything else? I make a motion, he's very well, so, I'm not done, I asked everybody else. So we need to reorganize. So. The treasurer.
The treasurer, chair, vice chair, PDPC. That's. And secretary. So the, ladies, uh, of her, the previous, the chairman, the chair. Jason is the vice chair, I believe Nate, you had, were the treasurer, and, um, he were the secretary, and Nita was the PDPC commissioner. That was.
Wasn't there a gentleman that was kind of sitting in also as an alternate? Did he sit in one day? No? Oh, perfect.
Okay, so we, we need to get this over with. Elections will remain, you're aware of the line. I'm gonna entertain. Comments and. Motions to the point, starting with. Secretary? Who's, who's permitting the second?
Pan.
Well.
I'm five, I would say.
So we have a. So I'll make a.
Not an eight. To not make, you want to say secretary.
A second?
After that motion?
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Next?
Treasurer.
Treasurer?
Yes.
You would accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion for Nate to stay as, uh, treasurer.
I'll second that.
Comment?
Nope.
Favor?
Do you wanna stay on as president?
Not president. Chair.
President twenty twenty-four.
What do you think, Jason?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for Jim to stay on as chair.
I'll second that motion, I'll take Jim as chair.
Thank you all. Any further comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice chair?
Yep.
Do you wanna stay on as vice chair?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve Jason as vice chair.
Second?
Will second the motion as Jason is vice chair.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So.
And we had that one more, PDPC commissioner.
But guess who's not here?
Valen Tolton.
So I'll entertain a motion.
To approve as, did you see, no.
He loses that.
Jason Schlepper's motion, okay, Jason Schlepper's motion.
You're gonna get it. And they said, can you sleep?
I, I don't.
I'll second.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'll entertain a motion to. If somebody has something else.
Second the motion to adjourn?
Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.